We'd like to call this meeting to order. This Weaver County Commission meeting, dated today, the 12th day of November. It's 10 o'clock in the morning. We're right on time today. It's good to have you all here. We welcome you. And we'll start this meeting. So our meeting this morning is going to be started with an invocation by Brian Baron, Pledge of Allegiance by Steve Burton, and the Thought of the Day by Commissioner Forre. So we'll go to that point. Brian?
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this beautiful morning, and we're thankful for this beautiful world that we live in. And we're very grateful that we live in a free country, and we're thankful for those who have gone before us, who have preserved and protected those freedoms for us. We are thankful that we can participate in this county commission meeting today. I pray that thy Spirit will be with us to guide us, bless us with wisdom, and help us as we discuss the items on the agenda that we may make, decisions that are in accordance with thy will and that would be best for the citizens here in Weaver County. We thank thee for all that thou hast done for us, and pray these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with all mission and regard, indivisible with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you, Commissioners. So my thought today goes to a ribbon-cutting that was actually held last Friday night, last Friday evening. And you probably are well aware that Youth Impact just opened up their new facility that I was very impressed with. And, you know, I'm impressed with the building, but I'm more impressed with what that organization does for the underserved student population in Ogden City. If you look at what that group does, and you look at the average grade point for that group that studies down there, that works down there after school, that has a place to go after school, it really benefits the community. It benefits them. It gives them a purpose. And because it gives them a purpose, it ends up being such a beneficial use for the community. Keeps those kids out of gangs. Their grade point average, from what I've been told, is about one point higher, 1 point. So from an average of like in the Ogden School District of a C+, they're up to a B+. And if they're doing that with a nonprofit associate, nonprofit group, we need to, we need to thank them and encourage more of the nonprofits. Again, going back to Commissioner Jenkins with IGP, I firmly believe if you can get these kids at a young age headed in the right direction, it's going to save us a lot of problems, a lot of state and county dollars in the future. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to them because it was a great event, well-attended, by the way.
That's very good. Thanks, Commissioner. Where, what is the address of that new facility?
It's down on Grant Avenue, just straight 24th. It's the old, well, back in the old days, probably when you and I were around it, was a car dealership. I remember it was, was it Lincoln or? But it's in the, then it was, then it was basically a showroom for, I believe it was the Eckles had their cars in there.
Oh, yeah, I know where you're talking about.
And then the Episcopal Church actually purchased that, and Episcopal Church is letting, basically, it's a zero-year lease on the main building, and then this new building will also basically, you know, it's paid for now.
Yeah, the new building's on the west side of it.
It's on the, it would be on the southwest, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
Well, you know where the ballfield is. This is just on the corner up on Grant from the ballpark.
Yeah, that was an old Pontiac dealership.
Pontiac, yeah.
Always kids.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah.
You remember Pontiacs? Do you even remember what a Pontiac is? I always thought a Pontiac was a potato.
I was an Edsel. I was an Edsel man myself.
I didn't think he was old enough to even know, that you recognized. You remember?
He was a Pontiac.
Yeah. Oh, that's good. Well, we welcome all of you here today. This is the public comment portion, so if there's any of you who've come to address us today, now's the time for you to stand up and talk to us. We'd be glad to hear from you. All right. We see nobody wanting to do that, so we'll go to Item F, which is our presentation today. Third Quarter Financials for 2019. Mr. Scott Park, man, it's good to see you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Last little while, you've been bringing us good news. I hope this is the same.
I hope, I hope so. We'll define good here in just a moment. I know you've been, you know, excited on pins and needles, waiting for the third quarter financial report, so I'm happy to present it to you this morning. So you should have it. It was included in your pack. And I just wanted to go over the revenues. So our sales tax growth, we had budgeted 5% this year, and currently it, we are at 4.8%. So we are trending slightly below what we had expected. Now, we're well within our margins, so we don't need to make any cuts or adjustments for this. We're well within our margins on this one, but we're trending slightly lower than we'd expected on sales tax, and that's not just us, that's across the state. Our property tax growth, we had expected to come in at between 3% and 3.5%, and we're right there. So property tax makes up about $36.7 million of our general fund. Sales tax makes up 12.5%, or excuse me, 12.5 million. So if you want to be short on anything, you want to be short on sales tax, not property tax. So we're, we're good in terms of our revenues, and we're not worried about the revenue projections. We're still within our margins, just slightly towards the bottom of the acceptable trend. Our expenses, through the end of the third quarter, we had spent about 60% of our budget, which is in line with what we normally do, or about 60% to 62% at this point during the year. So we're right in line with where we expect to be on our budgets for our general fund. On our Culture, Parks, and Rec Fund, and if you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. On our Culture, Parks, and Rec Fund, again, our expenditures, we normally are at 65%. At this point during the year, we're at 65.1%, so we're right on the money on the expenditure side of things for our Culture, Parks, and Rec, and that's our Ogden-Eckles Conference Center, the I Sheet, the Golden Spike Event Center, the parks, and various facilities of that nature. That makes up our Culture, Parks, and Rec Division. For our Municipal Services Fund, so our Municipal Services Fund, our revenues are slightly higher, and that's primarily due to some additional road charges. So Joe Hadley at the Roads Department has been doing some additional work for some cities and also for the general fund to clean out some of the rivers and ditches, and so he's slightly ahead on his revenue. And expenses are right where we expect them to be for this time of the year, about 64.5% of the budget spent. So we don't have any concerns with the Municipal Services Fund. Going on to our Transfer Station. Transfer Station, our revenues are slightly higher than normal, this, excuse me, they are slightly higher than normal, that's just some higher volumes coming in of tonnage to the transfer station. Our expenditures are also up, and that's also because with the higher tonnage coming into the garbage, or the transfer station, we have to then ship that out. So, but our margins are fine. So although we're a little further ahead in our revenues and expenditures, our margins are just right. So there's no concern with the transfer station. Our Animal Shelter, we are a little bit ahead in spending than we normally are at this time, and that's primarily due to some capital expenditures, timing, the timing of capital expenditures. So we don't spread, spend those evenly over the year. We just go out and buy our capital purchases, or we fix, we're doing some repairs on the buildings and roofs, and we just go out and pay for that. And so it kind of skews the percentages, you know, we don't spend it like payroll and even amount every, you know, pay period. It's a big lump sum. So I don't think we're going to have any issues, though, going through our animal shelter through the end of the year. And finally, a new one we're adding is the Garage. So the Garage, our expenditures are where we would expect them to be for this time. Our revenues on your report, that actually looked like they're higher. We did a one-time capital infusion of $500,000 this year when we started the garage to be its own independent unit where it had to bill for its expenses. And so with that $500,000 dumped in there, it looks like the revenues are doing really well. Actually, the revenues are slightly lower than what we would expect them to be for the amount of work that they're doing, so we've worked with our operations and our garage, and we're making some adjustments to make sure that that fund is sustainable in the long run.
So on that, Scott, didn't you anticipate, or didn't you see where they hadn't been billing everything quite like they should be?
That is correct. So the, we weren't billing out as much time as we had expected, and part of that was we just weren't tracking the time well enough on which vehicles were being repaired. So we've made some adjustments to do that, to make sure that all the time that is being spent repairing vehicles is being charged to that Vehicles Department.
Good.
Yep. So unless you have any specific questions, I'll present to you that as the third quarter financial report.
Commissioners, any questions? That'd be the time.
Looks good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. That's a good report. So hold on. Why are you right here? Come on back for a second. So is there anything that you should, you can see that we should be doing that we're not?
At this point, no. I think we've talked and had a good set of discussions in our budget hearings as to where we need to go for the Municipal Services Fund. We have a public hearing tonight to discuss an adjustment to the Municipal Services Fund tax rate for the 2020 calendar year.
And 911.
Well, 911's a separate entity from Weaver County.
Oh, yeah, it is. But, well, and that's next week. The announcements were in the paper, or the notices were in the paper today.
Yes.
Next Tuesday night.
Yes. But the Municipal Services Fund, this is not the truth in taxation hearing, this is just an open house to help inform the public as to the reason why we're doing what we're doing. And if you recall, this is, we're just shifting the taxes from the general funds to the unincorporated areas so that they pay for the services that they are receiving. So once we make that adjustment and we can make our Municipal Services Fund sustainable in the long run, I think that we're doing great.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, you can see, I think we're heading in the right direction. When we got elected, we promised the county, this is what we do. When we had to change taxes, that there'd be small incremental changes, and when we had to, we'd get this thing lined up the way it was supposed to be, and most of these funds we've fixed. This is the last one that we've really got to fix. And so I'm, I'm anxious to get this taken care of. And even this doesn't finish it, doesn't fix it all the way, but it's going to be really close. So I'm anxious to see that.
Well, it changes it also, Commissioner. You know, you say it's small incremental changes, but there's also an incremental change for 94% of the taxpayers, too.
That's true. For 94%, those outside the Municipal Services account, taxes are actually going down. So for 94%, you're right, Commissioner, they're going to have the tax decrease with the county this year. So that's good. That's good.
And I, you know, I think the key term there is the shift.
Yeah.
We're just taking, and we're actually decreasing, as Commissioner Harvey mentioned, decreasing for 94%, those in municipalities, increasing those unfortunately that live in the unincorporated area. But it's, again, the right thing to do to prevent the subsidy that has been taking place the last few years from municipalities to the unincorporated area. So it was time to do it, as, as much and difficult as it is to have an increase, it needed to happen.
You know, it's interesting, I have a good friend that lives up there, and he wrote me an email the other day and says, you know, "The sheriff drives up and down my road a little, and I live on a state road, and he says, other than that, and once in a while, he says, you give me very few services." I wrote him back, and I kind of went through and started detailing all the services that he pays for here, the operation of this facility, and the, you know, the library up there, and, you know, it just goes on and on and on, all those things that they pay for. And they, so many people forget those things, you know? They just view the, the kind of hard items, you know? That'd be our Roads Department, people like that. They forget all the other departments, Recreation Department, all those things that they pay them for.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, planning and zoning, engineering.
Engineering.
Yeah. So, yeah, they forget all those things. Well, very good. Thank you, Scott. We appreciate that presentation. So next item on our agenda, or the consent items, Item G starts out with Item Number One, Request for Approval of Warrants, 2161 through 2179, and 444, 722 through 444, 860, in the amount of $1,802,660. Item Two is Request for Approval of Purchase Orders in the Amount of $106,727. Item Three is Request for ACH Payment to U.S. Bank in the Amount of $176,085. Those are our P cards. Item Four, Request for Approval of the Minutes of the November 5th Meeting. Item Six is Request for Approval of Business Licenses. Item Six, that was five. Item Six is Approval of Severance Agreement, binding between Weaver County and Jacob Weiss. And Item Seven is Request for Weaver County Emergency Management to Repurpose Laptops. Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Ricky, do you want to go, go over the, the payroll and?
About. We issued 18 purchase orders this week for $107,000. 29% of that amount, or $31,000, is for the transfer station to work on the paving project that they have out there. $30,000 or 28% is for the library, and that was primarily a digital media subscription. And then another 9% or $10,000 is also for the library, and that is maintenance for the security camera system up at the Ogden Valley Branch. 6% or $7,000 is for the Sheriff's Office to purchase ballistics equipment, and then another 6% or $7,000 is for the garage, and they are repairing and replacing a hydraulic lift there. 5% or $5,600 is for the jail, and that will go to purchase riot suits. 156 checks we issued for $1.8 million, just under half of that amount, $836,000 is the insurance for employees and retirees. 29% or $529,000 is escrow releases, and that went to three different organizations, but the largest is Geneva Rock, I believe, and that was for the Overlook subdivision. And then 10% or $184,000 is for the library, and that was mostly for the construction at the Ogden Valley Branch, but also some chiller covers at the Pleasant Valley Branch.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioners?
No questions.
All right, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent items as presented, Items One through Seven.
Second.
I have a motion as second for G1 through 7, all the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Next item is G, or H, action items. Request for Approval of Agreements, binding between the following individuals for Deputy Sheriff Basic Training.
Charlotte.
This is Tenick Variable, Kyle Vanderstappen, Stephanie Tovanen, Samuel Ritchie, Jacob King, Matthew Green, Lynn Miller, Corbett Miles, Dalton Gulo, Cheyenne Carter Fisher, Austin Eborn, and Colton Domain, Connor Nelson, and Adam Calder. Charlotte, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I will do that. Good morning, Commissioners. How are you this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I hope you enjoyed your holiday yesterday.
It was good.
Good. So these are just training agreements. So we sent these individuals through the Training Academy, the Post-Academy, to either be on our enforcement side or our corrections side. These agreements just state that, being prorated, that they can and will pay up to the total amount on Page Two of these agreements, and this just.
How much is that state?
So it just depends. It's depending on their salary benefits and the training that they went through. So it depends on each person. So it will be prorated. So if they do not fulfill this agreement, which is a two-year agreement with us, they will be asked to pay that in a prorated amount, depending on the time that they do serve with us.
Good.
Do you have any questions for me on these?
I appreciate, you know, this is to get new talent.
Yes, sir.
Interested in this field. For public safety is a challenge, but you've done that very well, especially with this program. This is a nice pool of names.
Yes.
And I really appreciate this. This is good.
Yes, we have a really great recruiting program, and our people are amazing at what they do, and I'm just glad to see this many people interested in these fields.
It's a process, isn't it, Charlotte?
That it is.
Yeah, it's a process. Very good. Commissioners, how about a motion?
I would move to approve the request for approval of agreements between individuals listed in H1 for Deputy Sheriff Basic Training reimbursement.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlotte. We appreciate you. Next item is Request, Number Two, Request for a Contract, binding between Weaver County and Atrans Transportation Engineering for Stop Sign Analysis and Speed Evaluation. Mr. Gary Meyer.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So as you can see, I'm here requesting your approval for a contract with Atrans Transportation Engineering. This is for the intersection, a stop sign warrant study for the intersection of Skyline and Eastwood, as well as a speed study up in the valley in the Eden area around the park, looking at some of the curves and the speeds that people are traveling those curves.
Can you tell us the amount of that contract?
I can. It's $2,800 total.
Commissioners, any questions?
Can you give us the exact location of the speed study in Upper Valley?
Yes, so directly south of the park in Eden, in Old Town Eden there.
Yeah.
There's a part of the road where the road makes essentially a 90-degree bend from going southbound to eastbound. And then also, while they're up there looking at that, I was going to have them look at the curve north of Carlos and Harley's, where it also has kind of a 90-degree bend as well, too. We've got vehicles that, maybe some motorists that are not as familiar with that area that probably take those corners a little faster than they should be. So I'm hoping that we can put some measures in place to calm the traffic speeds as much as possible.
Is that currently a 30 or a 40?
I believe it, well, it varies. Right through town, it's 25, but then it does increase up as you get away from town in both directions.
And just so you know, our Roads Department, on a previous commitment, put up some, I think you were aware, the markers that they put up to maybe give a little more warning on that inner, that curve.
Correct.
That would be, I believe, just north of Carlos and Harley's.
Correct.
On that corner, that we've had some complaints before, but that's, it, this is probably something that does need to be studied.
Yeah, and as many events take place in that area of Eden, we want to make sure that people are traveling through there at, you know, safe speeds and doing what we can to, to monitor that and, and help.
Yeah, okay.
I agree. Mr. Harvey?
No, that's great. Out and out south of Skyline and Eastwood, that, I know right where that is, that'll be quite fitting.
Good.
So we can't do that study in-house, huh?
Well, it's a time issue, right? We, we can. We would have to acquire some equipment, some of what they're using to do some of the different studies. We have counting equipment, but we don't have anything that monitors speed. So.
All right, well, I just wondered.
Great question, though. Great question, so.
Good. You can put somebody out there in a car.
As far as enforcement?
No, no. As far as counting and the speed gun and?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And we would, we would need to acquire, you know, maybe even borrow a radar gun from our, from our guys at the Sheriff's Office, but, but, yeah, we, we don't have any way to monitor.
All right. $2,800 isn't that big of a deal.
You know, I would like you, though, to Commissioner Jenkins' point.
Yeah.
Is to maybe look with the university and see if there's a way in the future, Gary. I know that we've trimmed you down 20% in your department.
Sure.
And so I realize that Labor's very, you're keeping a tight look on that, but maybe get an intern from Weaver State to help you, and you could do things like this in other areas, because I know these are the two more high-priority places.
Right.
But if you have on those others, if maybe an intern could help you, and that would also help them, and we love partnering with Weaver State. So just a suggestion for you.
Sure. Great advice. Yeah, we'll look into that.
I've got one additional question, Gary. So I'm assuming that the speed evaluation analysis would conform with state statute as regards to doing a traffic study prior to any speed limits being changed?
Absolutely.
So this would be accepted by the state?
Yeah. It will comply with all MUTCD and ASHTO standards.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You know, as a county, we actually obey state laws, where many of the municipalities don't. They just change the speed.
Well, yeah, that's, I would agree with that 99%. You know, there has been, there has been one occasion where, actually, that didn't happen.
Only one.
Only one, which, you know.
It's just one.
Just once. But they, in, in all fairness, that was corrected in fairly good fashion, and those people that did receive speeding tickets were let off the hook, so I think the.
Just one.
It was a fair compromise.
Mr. Chair, if you're ready to entertain a motion, I'll make the ocean motion that we approve the contract between Weaver County and Atrans Transportation for Stop Sign and Speed Evaluation.
I'd second that.
All right, I've got a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved, Gary.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item Three is Request for Approval Contract, binding between Weaver County and Securus Technologies to Increase Services. Phil Reese.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
How are you, Phil?
I'm well, and yourself?
Good.
Good. The purpose of this amendment is to increase services between Weaver County Sheriff's Office and Securus Technologies. This contract addendum will update inmate telephone services provided by Securus Technology. This addendum introduces e-messaging for inmate services, which allows for two-way electronic communications between friends, family, and an inmate. A 20% commission will be paid to the Weaver County Sheriff's Office from Securus Technologies regarding these services. The original contract, Mr. Baron redlined, and we sent back to Securus to provide us some more stable pudding. Is that verbiage correct? As far as accepting inmate mail and then scanning it in and destroying it thereafter. There is not an additional cost to this addendum. The original cost was put into the master agreement and already agreed upon. That what it does do is increase revenue slightly. I have no projection whatsoever because we haven't tried this before, so I apologize for not having a number for you, but it's a new, it's a new adventure, and will hopefully generate some revenue. And what it does do is significantly increase staff safety and security. We've been getting a lot of mail from the inmates from outside of the facility with Suboxin and different drugs inside of the mail, so that will increase our safety for the inmates. Is there any questions I can help you? A woman with?
Commissioners?
No.
Go ahead.
So just clarify this for me. So is this, you said phones, but also mail, so this is anything, anything that comes in contact communication-wise with the inmates, or exactly what does this cover?
So Securus Technology does all of our telephones currently. The addendum increases both e-messaging, so inmates and their families can message back and forth, and also allows us to scan in any mail, any physical mail that is sent to the inmates. We scan it in, we hold it for 30 days, and then destroy the actual physical mail, and the inmates are able to read their email on their tablets within the facility.
Okay. Sounds a little more secure than what you have now, then.
It's better. Definitely better.
How about a motion, Commissioner Forre?
I'd move to approve the contract between Weaver County and Securus Technologies to Increase Services to the.
Weaver County Facility.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Thank you very much, Phil. Thank you very much, Phil. Next item is a request for approval of a holding strip agreement binding between Weber County and the developers of Shepherd Estates subdivision. Mr. Steve Burton.
Hey, commissioners. A few months ago, a subdivision, Shepherd Estates, located in Huntsville, there's four lots off of 7800 East. That subdivision was recorded and the developers after that realized that they wanted to recuperate some of the costs of putting in several hundred feet of road, and so they're requesting to enter into this holding strip agreement where if, once adjacent development happens, they'll be able to negotiate a price to, with those developers to pay for that road that's already been constructed.
Well, that will repay them for their putting it in.
Yes.
That's standard. Questions, commissioners, either of you? I see none. I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the, I'll make the motion that we approve the holding strip agreement binding between Weber County and the developers of Shepherd Estates subdivision.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion as a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Thank you, Steve. Next, number five is a request for approval of contracts binding between Weber County and the following individuals for the Ogden Musical Theater, 2019 production of Five Carols for Christmas. They are James C. Christensen, director, Silas Stott for design, set designer, Karen Butler for stage manager, Marilyn Montgomery for props, Lindsay Garside for hair design, David Reese for lighting, and Adam McGuire for sound. Mrs. Cassie Bybee, time's yours.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So this is our production team for Five Carols for Christmas. The performances are November 29th, the 30th. We have two shows on the 30th, a matinee, and then also we'll show the musical after the Santa run and the lighting of the Christmas parade and whatnot, so that'll be at 8:00 PM on the 30th, and then again on Monday night, December 2nd. So this is actually the production team for Five Carols and we're moving, we're excited about this show. I think a couple of you saw a few numbers that they did.
Yeah, we did.
At one of the Republicans' Women's Meetings that you guys were to, so, yeah. Fun show.
Clever.
Very clever. Actually, your, your community, your own Jim Christian, he actually wrote it, and then Ken Plain, that is up at Weber State, he wrote the music for it. So it's actually written right here in Weber County as well, so.
Yeah, this is, I'm excited, this is going to be a good production.
A perfect way to start the holidays.
Perfect way.
Yeah, there's, there's tickets available, they're on sale now. I'm always trying to plug that, but, so get your tickets. It's going to be a lot of fun. We couldn't do this, I just want to say, we couldn't do this without the support of Ramp and our partners with America First and, you know, Stuart Education and those that, that we get support through in the community. So we want to, we want to continue to thank them for all their support.
Cassie, you do a good job in funneling and being a great cheerleader there. I really appreciate it. These are, this is important.
So what were those dates again, Cassie?
November 29th is a Friday, so the day after Thanksgiving is the first show, and then there's a matinee on the 30th and an evening show after, you know, the Christmas lighting, and then December 2nd, Monday evening, there's a show. And honestly, these actors, and they would love to extend, we'd love to extend, but the, the theater itself is so full in December, I have no room to extend. I mean, you know, that's a good problem to have, but I'm trying to slot things in as much as possible.
That's great. That's good news. Well, very good, commissioners. Do you want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the contracts binding between Weber County and those stated for the Five Carols of Christmas.
And I'd be happy to second that. Looks like another great production for our community.
It's so fun. It's just so humorous and has the best sweet, tender message, holiday message at the end, but if you want to laugh and get in the Christmas spirit, come see this show.
There you go. The arts are alive in Weber County.
Yes.
Yes.
Living proof.
Yes.
Living proof. That's right, Commissioner Ford. Very good. So I have a motion.
I second it.
Oh, that's true, you did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Thanks, Cassie.
Thank you, Cassie.
Appreciate that. Item six is a request for approval of agreement binding between Weber County and the following individuals for legal representation to the indigent defendants in an unlawful pattern of activity case. Clifford Venable and Gregory Furbach. Brian Barron, you're going to present that. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. So this item, as well as eight and nine, all arise out of the same situation, so I'm going to give you just a little bit of background to support why the county's entering into these agreements. So our county attorney's office is prosecuting five defendants with unlawful pattern of activity. It's a first degree felony. And as a result of the five defendants, all the witnesses, and the sheer volume of evidence in this case, the trial's been scheduled for six weeks, beginning at the end of April and going through the month of June. That's a big burden for the county attorney's office, but it's an even bigger burden for our public defenders. We only have eight public defenders in the district court and only six of those are full contract attorneys, and this case would take up five of those six attorneys for those six weeks and probably another two weeks prep time. They wouldn't be able to handle their regular law and motion calendars and all their other cases. So we met with them and they said, this just isn't workable, we can't handle this on top of our other responsibilities. So we talked about options, and one of those options included the county hiring attorneys to come in and help out with this case. That came with about a half million dollar price tag. And so Commissioner Harvey and I sat down and worked on a grant application to the state, the Indigent Defense Commission, to receive some funding to help us out with this. They had denied our initial request and asked us to modify it, so we tweaked it a little bit. They didn't want to fund just one case, they want to have kind of an ongoing relationship with the county. That's part of their state mandate. And so we tweaked our application a little bit so that we would hire two attorneys that would handle difficult cases, homicide cases, first degree felony sex cases, and these types of unlawful pattern of activity cases. So they have approved our grant application in the amount of $270,000 to hire two attorneys. The county is then going to hire two attorneys out of our funding to help with this, and this first item, item six, is our share of helping provide representation to the defendants in this case.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? As Brian did a good job explaining that.
Yeah, great explanation. Brian, I do have one question for you. So you mentioned that with that grant, though, we might receive some pressure from the state to formally apply to be part of the IDF, Indigent Defense Fund. Was that a concern about, related to this, or was that a different concern that we talked about last week?
No, that's separate. So the Indigent Defense Commission, like I said, they weren't thrilled with our grant application because they don't want to just help counties out with a single instance. They want to track cases, they want to develop an ongoing relationship, and depending on what those numbers show, they may impose additional requirements on us. I don't think they would require us to participate in that Indigent Defense Fund, but they may require us to hire other personnel in, in future grant applications. This grant money only goes through the end of June, so to keep these attorneys on, we will have to reapply sometime in May or the end of June so that we can keep them going.
Great explanation. It sounds like this may be something we need to work on this legislative session to, to look at the additional requirements that may or may not be applicable or that put undue burden on us, and also to make sure that these funds are available for future cases because this is probably, unfortunately, not going to be the last.
Exactly.
That we see, so. With that, Mr. Chair, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I would move to approve the request of approval of agreement between Weber County and the following individuals for legal representation to indigent defendants in an unlawful pattern of activity case. Clifford Venable and Gregory Furbach.
Very good. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Very good. Item seven is a request for approval amendment to a contract binding between Weber County and Mary Ann Ellis to include representation of indigent defendants in mental health court. Brian Barron.
So Mary Ann Ellis has been working with the county under contract to represent parents in juvenile court for years. She does a fantastic job and she's just taking on an additional assignment to help out with the mental health court. So this is just an amendment to her contract.
This is a name we see constantly, so we're familiar with her.
She does a nice job.
You do. You use her a lot.
Yes, yes. And she's been taking on additional assignments specifically over the past year and a half, and so we've amended her contract a couple times.
Any questions, commissioners? How about a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and Mary Ann Ellis.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Item eight is a request for approval of an agreement binding between Weber County and Indigent Defense Commission for Grant Funding. Brian Barron.
So this is the contract between us and the Indigent Defense Commission that allows us to receive that $270,000. They're not going to provide it in a lump sum. What happens is we pay the attorneys who are going to be representing these defendants and then we seek reimbursement from the Indigent Defense Commission. Along with that, we have to provide them with quarterly reporting on what our defense attorneys are doing, what their caseload is, those types of things.
Questions, commissioners? Either of you? Commissioner Harvey, how about a motion?
I'll make that motion. Mr. Chair, thank you that we approved the agreement binding between Weber County and the Indigent Defense Commission for Grant Funding.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Item nine is a request for approval of an agreement binding between Weber County and the following individuals for specialized legal representation to indigent defendants in difficult and complicated cases. Grant Morrison and Randall Marshall. Brian, this is your last one.
So these are.
I'm not going to recognize you again.
Keeping me busy. So these are the two attorneys who will be paid for out of the grant funding to handle this unlawful pattern of activity case, but also future cases where we need attorneys who have experience. And Grant Morrison and Randall Marshall each have about 30 years' experience and they're well-regarded in the legal community, and so we picked them to handle these complicated cases because they have the skills to do it.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions?
Seems like a good fit.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the agreement between Weber County and the following individuals for specialized legal representation to indigent defendants in difficult and complicated cases. Mr. Grant Morrison and Mr. Randall Marshall.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And aye. That passes. Commissioner comments? Do either of you want to say anything?
Looking forward to tonight.
Yeah, that's true.